And to God, the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Around a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, young ladies. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo.
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. How?
Here.
Mr. Kellaher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sabin?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We do not have any recognitions or ceremony proclamations tonight except for the Daisy Troop. Do we have any additions or deletions to the voting session agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I appreciate you putting that draft letter for the opioid task force on the work session. They're going to Harrisburg to meet with Attorney Freed Wednesday immediately after that next voting session. Could we by any chance move that to the voting session tonight just to lend counsel support, give them enough to advance notice to use that as an arsenal to get more federal funding, federal attention?
Are they going to hand carry the letter or are you going to...? Mr. Griffin?
No, actually Attorney General Freed is going to Washington on the 24th to be Attorney General.
Okay.
We're not... we already have the...
Alright, so he's actually going to be on his way there, okay.
It will have to be mailed to his office in Harrisburg so he can hand carry it.
Thank you. I have no problems. Anybody else on council would have a problem with adding that to the voting session?
Nope.
That's fine.
The support letter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everybody.
So we'll add that to... we'll make that number eight. Is that correct?
Thank you, sir.
The support letter for the opioid programs. And you'll find that information on the work session if necessary you need to find that, okay?
Thank you again.
So we have a motion then to adopt the voting session agenda with that addition.
So moved.
Mr. Schnee, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Sabin. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, non-heard, motion carries. Public comment on voting session agenda items. Mr. Griffith, non-agenda?
No, the last.
Non-agenda?
Yes.
Okay. And Colleen Garrison, please. Colleen was here last two weeks ago, correct?
I was.
Okay. And she's a member of the Wyoming Free Library, is that correct?
I'm president of the Board of Trustees of the Wyoming Free Library, which is a volunteer position which I hold very dearly. I want to thank you all very much for considering supporting the Keystone Grant for Public Library Facilities. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and our Executive Director, John Roberts, this grant is something that is very important to us at this time. The upgrades that we need at the library are ADA compliant entryways. We also need our HVAC systems upgraded as well as LED lighting placed throughout the library. The ADA compliant doors, as you can imagine, will provide greater ease of access to all of our senior visitors as well as those who are physically challenged. And as far as the HVAC and the LED lighting system, our utility bills, as you all know, just go up and go up and go up. And with the new HVAC systems, which we hope will be more energy efficient, and the LED lighting in place, we will be able to decrease our utility bills and then that money will be able to be put right back into our collection as well as to enhance programming for children. We've always appreciated the county support that we've had over the years and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to address council before we get to the agenda items? Anyone else? Yes.
Agenda.
Agenda items.
Maverick.
That's not on the agenda. That's on the work session. Mr. Troy. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we move on to the agenda. Minutes from the March 26 meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Wacus, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Vog? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Mr. Urban?
Abstention.
Any abstentions? Ms. Sabin? Motion carries. Moving down to agenda item number one, motion to introduce an order in submitting the 2019 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This amendment would provide for the drug task force officer that was discussed the work session when Ms. Salavantis was here, our district attorney. We have a motion to introduce the orders.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Schnee and Mr. Bilbo? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellaher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. So that's the first reading. We will have a second reading and then before the second reading, we'll have a public hearing on that. Moving down to number two, motion to introduce the ordinance submitting the 2019 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. And as for the plants, the transportation planner and the funding would be provided through the NPO. Is that correct, Mr. Pedri?
Correct.
Thank you. Motion to introduce it?
So moved.
Mr. Perry, second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Vog? On the question? There are none. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellaher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving down to number three, motion to introduce the resolution entering to a lease for a portion of land that Luzerne County annexed or used by the Flower Tent. Mr. Kellaher and second by Mr. Urban, correct? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellaher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the second page, number four, motion to introduce an order in submitting Luzerne County zoning map to rezon parcels of property in the borough of Pringle from Light Industrial, which is an M2 zone, to Two Family Residence District, which is an R2 zone. We have a motion. Mr. Kellaher, second. Mr. Urban? On the question? Mr. Eddy, would you come to the microphone, please?
Yes. At the hearing, there was concern by the union, the IBEW, I think, is the union that owns the property immediately behind because they were concerned that having a residential district adjacent to their property would somehow result in them having more stringent requirements with regard to some of the activities that they were doing. But the planning commission interpreted that what they were concerned about was not in effect, that they were not required to have additional setbacks or anything like that, that they would have to comply with the basic standards of the existing M2 district and not anything more restrictive than that.
Anyone else with a question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kellaher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Number five, motion to adopt the resolution sponsoring the Wyoming Free Libraries application for a Keystone Grant for the public library facilities, which we just heard Ms. Garrison speak to us in that regard. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas and second. Ms. Sabin? On the question? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellaher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Moving down to number six, motion to adopt the resolution, committee a local match for the state operating assistance for the Hazleton Public Transit.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Schnee and Mr. Bilbo, on the question?
On the question, Mr. Chair. Can Mr. Sharp report on the successful...
Mr. Sharp is here. Please come to the microphone, please.
I did have a meeting with Schuylkill County Commissioners and I was refused the amount of $3,086. They said if there's other agencies that go into Schuylkill County and if they would give it to Hazleton Public Transit, they'd be setting a precedence. They said no one else asks that comes into the county for any funding.
And then how about Carbon County for the...
Carbon, I heard. I did hear back from Carbon, but they're not sure of a date that they can see me yet. So that I do not know. And like I said, I'm getting to the end now. This is a piece of the puzzle that I still have more to do. I will reimburse Luzerne County. I'm going to meet with Carbon this month and I will reimburse Luzerne County the $15,000 if I do get it. If you guys would award that.
I think you said, Mr. Sharp, if I may, Mr. Chair, that the deadline wasn't until June 1st, I believe, with May, late May being...
It's this month. It's actually this month I have to submit.
What's the deadline this month?
I don't have the date, but before the end. But I... this is just a small piece for me to get going with this. So like I said, I will reimburse the county the $15,000 if Carbon would give it to us. I need the resolution, then I have to go before our council and do other things that... to make this happen. It's not just getting the local match. It's numbers, budgets, and everything comes into play.
And like I understand, Mr. Sharp, you've got a lot of moving parts. I understand this. And like I said, estimates, it's $18,000, but this stuff does add up within our big budget in Luzerne County. And it's... I want to trust but verify. You know, I understand your good intentions. You want to reimburse Luzerne County with $15,000. But it seems like in governance, if the pressure isn't on, things tend not to get done in our favor. And I would be... feel much more confident, Mr. Chair.
I can assure you, I will be meeting with them this month. You have my word. And I'm a person of my word.
Guy, I've heard of Sheila.
The amount that Carbon, not Carbon, Schuylkill chose not to...
Yes.
...give to the grant is how much?
$3,086.
So it's about $18,086 that...
Carbon County's amount is $15,260 and Schuylkill County is $3,086.
If I heard you correctly, you said you're going to reimburse that amount if they don't pay their...
If Carbon County gives me the $15,260, I will gladly cut a check for Luzerne County.
Anyone else?
I tell you, Mr. Chair, I'd feel much more comfortable, you know, allocating the money. Because I want to be supportive of the Hazleton Public Transit system. I think that benefits people in Hazleton City and the neighboring jurisdictions. But I would be willing to make an amendment and approve the amount minus the $18,346 and then...
You want to make an amendment?
I would feel much more comfortable with that because I think, again, I don't want to be...
You made an amendment, Mr. Haas. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas's amendment?
Again, not to be punitive, but just because we want to make sure that what rightfully comes to us, comes to us.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas's amendment? Mr. Urban?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp, if your match is lowered by $18,000, what does that mean in terms of state dollars coming to you? Because aren't we on a... how much money we put in is how much the state puts in?
Right. We would have to figure out where we're going to get that money to make up the difference.
We'd probably reduce it by 10% because it's $171,000, I think, the total.
Yes, the total amount...
So you're a little bit over 10%.
Is 171,463.
So we would be... the county would be foregoing 10% of the state money as well by doing that?
Correct.
Because we're on... it's not just our money for the new members of council. It's not just our money that's being involved in this. It's also utilized as a state match, if I'm correct.
If once you lose it, we'll never get it back.
I'll make amendment that we paid a full...
Well, we have to vote on Mr. Haas's amendment first.
If I could speak to that too, Mr. Chair?
We have it on the floor and we have a... yes.
Again, I'm not looking to cut her nose to spite her face. I'm not looking at that. But Mr. Urban brought this up many, many months ago and this should have been really remedied many months ago. We're trying to save every penny we can here for the taxpayers and this is one of those cases where this should have been followed through on. And I think, again, it's not hypercritical that this gets done immediately tonight. I know that the time is short, Mr. Sharp. I acknowledge that you shared that last meeting. But again, we're in partnerships with these neighboring counties and they are... they're very responsible commissioners as well for both those counties. But if the pressure's on, again, that's unfortunately how people govern. And I just wish we could iron this out in advance.
Chair?
Yes.
I think we're putting the pressure on the wrong person though.
Okay.
Mr. Sharp, I think...
Yes, Mr. Sharp.
Gentleman does a wonderful job and he's not the one who's not providing the money. And he's promised to reimburse us the $15,000.
Correct.
If we don't get it. So we're talking about $3,000 holding up a matching grant from the state. So I'll vote no on your amendment, Mr. Haas.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Sharp, you told me that all this information regarding your transit was available on your city budget website.
Correct.
And Mr. Rebo told me that he couldn't find it. He submitted a right to no request and that the city stalled him. And now they told him a 30-day notice.
All of his right to no requests from Hazleton Public Transit, it was given in. So we submitted everything he asked us for. So he asked for other things from other departments of the city also.
Alright.
And apparently, they didn't have a couple of things ready to go. But Transit submitted everything he requested in. So we turned it into the right to no clerk at the city. So whether she sent our stuff to him or not yet, that I do not know.
He called me yesterday, told me he didn't get anything. He got a 30-day delay.
Well, he... everything he requested from Hazleton Public Transit, he got. I personally got everything together and submitted it in.
You gave it to who? To the city?
To the... I gave it to the right to no clerk for the city.
Who didn't give it to him? But you came...
I don't know.
But you came and told me that that information was available on your website.
It is on our website.
Why couldn't he find it?
He can either check... it's on riothpt.com website. He might be going on to the city website. We have our own... Hazleton Public Transit has their own website. It's riothpt.com.
Well, you told me you're an agency of the city, not...
We are an agency of the city, but we have a site that specifically is for transit. It's a separate site of the cities.
You know, Pennsylvania has this rule and set of laws that were a Commonwealth. In the Commonwealth, they have jurisdictions and they have townships and they have municipalities. And they have these because, you know, it's about local governance and it's about paying your own way. You know, for years, you've been coming here looking for money and I've voted every time to give you the money. But now I'm finding out that your own mayor and your own council, particularly your own mayor, doesn't want to fund your own transit department. He wants to come to the county. You know, about 15 years ago, when I was going through the county budget, I found money going to Cunningham Township. And I kept on asking what this money was for and they finally found out that it was for lifeguards. We were funding lifeguards for their pool in the summertime and that stopped. That stopped. You know, you want to run a separate transit department, in my opinion, you know, and you don't want to come under the auspices of Luzerne County Transportation Authority, then you should pay your own way because you have a right to do that. You shouldn't be coming here looking for money. You know, Mayor Crissat should kick in. You know, I'm going to support Harry's amendment because you know what? You don't come up with the $15,000. You should go to the mayor and say $15,000. I don't... you know, he might be under some distressed status, but he's not broke. No one's broke. So I'm going to support Harry's amendment and I'm not going to support providing you funds this time. For the first time in 20 years, I'm not going to vote for it.
If I could too, Ms. Chair. You know, for the new council members that have only been here for a short time, we've seen this quite a bit in county government where, you know, I'm a willing partner, I think Luzerne County is, but I think oftentimes, we're the ones paying over backwards to pay and finance things and be the partner and be the bigger entity where the other side doesn't quite match up. And this is a very reasonable request that this very small portion for neighboring counties pay up their fair share. $3,000, $15,000 from a neighboring county in a $171,000 match. When the governor, a few years ago, hamstrung the entire state budget at the county and school district expense, you know, it came right up to the edge of total disaster in Luzerne County. It was a very painful time. And then soon after, the legislature finally put the budget through. Like this is governing through crisis. Why can't we just do the right thing, negotiate and get the job done ahead of time? And I understand, and I'm not just trying to make a point. I'm not trying to stand tall and make a point, Mr. Chair.
I think you're right about governing without crisis.
But this is how... this is unfortunately, you have to almost cause a crisis. And I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I agree. You're doing a great job. I really appreciate you down there at HPT. But the point of the matter is, we're left holding the bag again. And it's only $15,000, $18,000. It's not a big chunk of change in the grand scheme of things. But this happens time and time again and it ends up costing hundreds of thousands of dollars and we can't afford it. I just ask my colleagues to please consider this amendment. It's very reasonable and we just might finally get something that we truly deserve.
Anyone else?
Just want to make sure I'm straight on this. We're talking about $3,000.
Well, $3,000 from one county and $15,000 from the others.
But the $3,000, whether we get that or not, we are going to get the $15,000 regardless.
Correct. No. If I get the $15,000 from Carbon, I will reimburse Luzerne County.
He has a meeting.
Oh, so you don't know yet?
I don't do not.
We have tax freebies downtown that we're going to... we put $5,000 towards the rear front commons. And I'm just expecting our partners downtown to come forward and help us out with this.
Okay, but let's stay on the topic of this.
It is the topic, Mr. Chair, but I'm just trying to illustrate to my colleagues that this happens time and time and time again. We're looking for partnerships, but willing and good... partners in good faith.
And he's willing to pay the money once he gets it.
If.
If he gets it.
If.
But he's been grilled. I mean, Mr. Urban says this has been going on for 20 years. I thought it was maybe 15, but it's been going on for 20 years. And in the last two years, this gentleman's been grilled up and down for some reason.
Right. It's time to pay up. It's time for municipalities to start paying their own bills. I mean, you're not giving Larksville any money. You're not giving the city of Wexbury any money.
A settlement was made 20 years ago, Mr. Urban, for Hazleton to stand on its own.
Who? I didn't make the agreement. The agreement was probably...
That agreement was made 20 years ago.
We've been paying for 20 years because the city doesn't want to pay for their own agency.
I think if you look back at history, it's been more than 20 years.
Whatever. I've only been here 20 years.
Yep.
And I've been paying... and I approved this for 20 years, but this year, I'm not going to approve it. I'm not going to approve it because it's time that they start standing on their own feet. It's their agency. They set it up. It's time for them to start funding their own match and not coming to us with hat in hand. No other municipality comes to us with hat in hand and says, "Fund my match."
One last thing, Mr. Chair, if I may. Again, just visualize, okay, we fund the match minus the $18,346. What does that mean? That means service to those areas will cease. I truly think that...
No, that doesn't mean that. Because they make those decisions. We don't make those decisions.
Yeah, we would make that decision.
Then, again, then I would take the commissioner and say, "Look, okay, the county council approved their match. We are short this amount of money." If this is happening, we're going to make some very tough decisions. And again, I would prefer not to govern this way. But unfortunately, that's how things have to happen.
I think I'd prefer not to govern that way.
I would very much prefer not.
What the proper thing to do is when we get to the budget process, that's when we make this discussion and make our decision as far as what Luzerne County's contribution will be. So they know full-time in advance what they're working with when they move forward.
This gentleman brought it up months ago during the budget process.
Yes.
Mr. Pedri, would you explain again, the county will lose money based on our grant?
So my understanding is, Mr. Sharp, if you're telling me I'm wrong on this, our match is a dollar-for-dollar match or it's a...
It's a percentage.
It's a percentage match on the state. Apologize.
It's like .0003 percent or...
So for the amount of money we put in, the state...
That's what we... the amount that they allocate to Hazleton...
Is based upon our match.
That is correct. So they're saying, "We're going to give you X amount. In turn, you need to be this for your local match."
So if we would lower our amount, they would lower their amount?
Our funding.
Okay, that's my understanding.
And like I said, once you lose, once they take away, you don't get back.
And I think you're faced with another issue with the turnpike litigation that's going on.
That is correct. Actually...
I think the funding's going to be flat for many years.
This year, the funding we're getting this year is the same everybody got last year.
Yep.
So now they're trying to figure out how they're going to move forward and to keep funding.
Until that litigation is finalized, I don't think there's a way forward. On Mr. Haas's amendment. Yes, Ms. Howe?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Sharp, how do you determine what the amount owed by Carbon or Schuylkill is? How do you determine that or does that come from the state?
What we do is, we take our total revenue miles and it's a formula. It's divided out, actually. And our... let me see. Our total revenue miles are 383,364 miles. So then what we'll do is we'll take how many... we go in every day during the week and, for example, like Carbon County, we go in 117 days during the... excuse me, I'm sorry. It's 117 miles per day times 263 days a year we go in, which comes to 30,771. Then we take our Saturdays. We go into Carbon 69 Saturdays a year, or I'm sorry, 69 miles a day. It is on Saturdays times 51 days and that comes to 3,519 miles. So that's 34,290. Then we take a percentage, which is 8.9%, and we multiply that and we get to 15,260.
Okay, so you calculate that all?
We calculated that all out, yes. People in our office.
So then your budget, you're basing like that percentage of your budget on those miles that you've calculated?
Correct. That's how we broke...
And if you didn't get that money, and if you didn't get the money from the state, would you then consider reducing the service in those areas?
We would probably have to.
Yeah. Okay.
We would have to. And like I said last time, we do take a lot of people from the other counties into Luzerne County for jobs, work and medical shopping.
Right. And the other question I have, and I guess it's really... yeah, it is a question. Maybe, but maybe you could refresh for people who are newer on council, why Hazleton Transit Authority and Luzerne County Transit Authority are not connected? Because I recall in 2011, they were supposed to be. When we came into Home Roll, we were expecting a unified transportation authority.
I guess back in, I wasn't there at the time, so, but my understanding is somewhat back in 2011, LCTA had a different director at the time, and things were done, apparently, at the time, there was the person from Pendot was for consolidation, and before anything was kind of finalized with anyone, things were done, certain things were done, and it wasn't done properly. So things never came about by that. And then since then, there has been discussions of consolidation, and Hazleton, like I said, is non-unionized. LCTA Colts are unionized. For us to come into the mix with LCTA Colts as a consolidation, we would drive the cost up because we're not union. It's a lot of more costs the other agencies have than we do.
Okay. Does this idea of consolidation ever come up with the MPO?
Yeah, we're in the middle of a study right now, actually.
Okay. All right, thank you.
In fact, there's been, I think, two other studies done at different times.
Yeah.
And I think in both cases, Pendot had backed off...
Yes.
The consolidation, and that's the reason why Hazel still stands alone.
That is correct, and pretty much, even though there's no consolidation, but Hazleton Public Transit, LCTA and Colts, we work together on a day-to-day basis. We're, we accept transfers, they accept, now, their, Wilkes-Barre's fares are a little different in Colts than Hazleton's, but we work together as one unit, pretty much, and make things happen from lower Luzern County all the way up to Lackawanna.
Any other questions?
One more. Have you ever gone to the council and the mayor and asked for money in the budget in Hazleton City? Or you just, because Luzern County gives it, you just never ask?
We talk, and it, believe me, Mr. Urban, if we could, we would.
What do you mean, if you could, you would?
I mean, Hazel would contribute.
Well, they don't.
I know that.
They don't, and they never have, right? You always came to the county.
That is correct.
So you always came to the county.
Okay.
One more question. I'm so sorry. I was wondering if Carbon and Schoolkill are not giving, and you decide to cut your service to those counties, do you think there would be an attitudinal change by their...
I don't, honestly, I couldn't answer that for them. I'm sure there would be some type of uproar, I would think.
I agree, so. One more question?
Yes.
Who appoints the members to the authority?
It's not an authority.
It's not an authority.
It's a city department.
It's the Department of the city.
Okay, so who runs that department? Who manages that department?
The mayor oversees all the departments, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Sharp, if I may ask you a question.
Yes.
What's the, these other counties that you're, unfortunately, let me just say, I think you're doing an excellent job trying to answer everyone's questions. Unfortunately, some of the questions, you're not even in a position to answer. I almost feel like some of these other counties that we're looking to do matching funds with, some of those guys ought to be sitting here, so we can say, "This is what we're trying to do. Where are you guys at?" You know, that, you know, Mr. Sharp's trying to answer all these questions as best as you can, and you're really not in a position to be able to say, "Well, they're going to do this, they're going to do that." What's the, what's the history of those counties and their contributions to you? And have they been cooperative in the past? Have you, has it always been a, this is what you're going through every year this happens to you, or...
Coming here, you mean?
No, I mean, with these other counties that you're chasing.
I mean, they've never contributed since day one. It just hasn't been in play that way.
I mean, one more, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may. And Mr. Urban has a point, you know, I'm so willing to support Hazel, and it's part of the metropolitan area, the Wilkes-Barre's Grand Hazleton metropolitan area. I think the county does have responsibility. But if it's a department under the mayor's jurisdiction, maybe the mayor can use his leverage to help communicate this to the neighboring counties. I mean, I agree with what Mr. Bilbo's saying, too. I just think we could certainly get a little more out of what we're getting right now, which is zero.
Yeah. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm wondering, Harry, you're the chair of the Legislative Committee, correct? Okay, I wonder if you have ever thought about maybe sitting down and having just informal discussions with, I'm assuming they have commissioners in Schoolkill County, Carbon County, whatever? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe brainstorming some problem-solving ideas together? You know, I'm not saying this is a problem in communication. It may be that the commissioners in the other counties don't quite understand the gravity of the situation here, and what a huge hardship I think it would be to their citizens if Hazleton stopped providing transit. You know, I'm thinking of people having to go to doctor's appointments as an example. I don't know, what do you think about that idea, Harry?
I think it's a great idea, but again, it's just like the court tell taxpayer, tax collector situation. Time is of the essence. Clearly, we need to supply the match for Mr. Sharp.
Sure.
And the time is extremely limited. I'd be more than happy to, and I've certainly bumped into those commissioners many times over the past several years, so I'm happy to give a call. But I think we left last meeting, we were saying, "Mr. Sharp would meet with the commissioners." I met with one board of them. The other one, he did not yet. And again, I think better than having a wish and a prayer that, yeah, well, maybe we might get a reimbursement, I'd like to see you prove positive. I'd like to see it before we approve this. And I think that is very critical, and I think unless the deadline is within the next two weeks, can we postpone it two more weeks to see if we yield some better results?
You have one amendment on the floor now.
That's right.
Let's vote on that first.
Same amendment.
And if you want to make a second amendment, you may.
I'm going to keep my amendment as is, if that's what it is to...
Yes, that's the amendment on the floor.
Further clarification, because when the budget was made up for us, was this amount of money placed in the budget?
Yes. The money that they're requesting, the local match for the Transportation Authority, or the Transportation Department, is in the budget.
With the caveat that Mr. Urban brought up at that time, that Mr. Sharp would talk with the commissioners to see if they would allocate their match at that time, many months ago. And now, again, we're up to a crisis point.
Okay.
It shouldn't be that way.
We have amendment from Mr. Hasse, second by Mr. Urban, to reduce the match by eighteen thousand, three hundred and some dollars, based on the contributions that would be assigned to Carbon and Schoolkill County, correct? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Um, no.
Mr. Sheik?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Amendment fails. Do we have a second amendment?
Yes, I'd like to make a second amendment, that we postpone this decision till the next council meeting, and during that time, perhaps, or Mr. Haas, will contact Carbon and Schoolkill County and express what's happening in terms of our attitude towards this.
Do we have a second? Ms. Sedman?
Second.
Ms. Wakus? On the question?
On the question, I'm not sure that's a county council member's role. I think it might be more effective from an administrative role, from the county executive. I think it should be Mr. Pedri.
I have no problem with changing that to Mr. Pedri. Ms. Wakus had talked about Mr. Haas in the role as chair of the Legislative Committee, which I serve on, but I have, in terms of whether it's appropriate or not for us to do that, I have no problem with Mr. Pedri handling that.
I like to do it with Mr. Haas. I think if the both of us go about doing it, I think that's, I got no problem reaching out to...
Well, you could take whoever you want. I just think it's the manager's role.
I mean...
I think it's, because it's a budget item, it could be the council's role, too.
Hey, may I go on a road trip? Jim Thorpe is nice.
Okay?
That one Louise. Did you hear this one?
Mr. Hasse and Mr. Pedri, correct?
Yes.
We want to do whatever helps out the situation.
Okay. Any other questions on that amendment to postpone the motion, and then allow Mr. Hasse and Mr. Pedri to have a conversation with the two counties to see if...
My amendment was to pay him in full tonight.
Yep. You're right, Mr. Sne.
Question, please?
Mr. Sne brought up an amendment earlier. We were discussing Mr. Haas's amendment, and that was to provide the full match as requested, correct?
Point of order, I don't think that's an amendment. I think that was your original, the original resolution.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I don't think that's, needs to be addressed as an amendment.
I don't think it was seconded either, was it?
Well, no, because we're dealing, it's not an amendment.
We were in a discussion regarding your amendment, so it wasn't. No. Mr. Sne, that's the original motion to pay the full...
Correct.
All right?
Yep.
So that was the motion that's on the agenda, okay? So we're going back to the motion to postpone, provided Mr. Haas and Mr. Pedri will make, have a conversation with the two governing bodies of those counties, and come back with information, hopeful.
Question, please?
Yes.
For Mr. Sharp, if we delay the two weeks and they have a discussion, does that cause any problem with him with filing papers?
Like I said, I have to coordinate this meeting with Hazleton's council meetings for different items on the agenda that they have to approve, so I, it may, yes.
It may?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else on a question in regards to postponement motion? I just, I have one comment in regards, I think if we want to have those two counties be active, more active with the funding, I think we should make an effort to meet with them separately. Mr. Sharp is a third party. He does not have any influence...
Right.
...with either one of those counties. He doesn't reside there, he's not a member of their county. I think it would be who was as the governing body in Luzern County to be the vehicle to make those discussions, talks, whatever it may be.
Right.
So moving forward, we know where we stand. That's my only comment.
I think you made a very valuable comment last time you spoke, when you said that money's already budgeted.
Yes.
And I'd be the first to lead the charge next year. I've just went on the same way that it did. But they're expecting that match this year.
Yep.
And I'll support this a hundred percent for this year. But we've got to have that meeting with them.
Yeah.
And if they're not willing, we're going to have to do what we're going to have to do.
And I think at that point, if we find out that the two counties are not willing, then we're going to sit down with the Hazel Department people and say to them, "We're willing to fund our portion. We're hopeful that the other two counties won't, but, you know, what are you going to do if we only fund our portion?" So they know in advance. They can make their plans and be ready to have a transportation setup and ready to go.
Right.
Okay?
Mr. McInley, if I may as well.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with Mr. Sne.
Yeah.
On moving forward. But again, I hate to keep coming back to Mr. Sharp, but I think what my concern is with this situation is, if it's budgeted, and are we then at risk of causing disruption of services or something for Luzern County residents that are counting on this because we're trying to get Mr. Sharp to answer questions he's not in a position to answer? He can't speak for those guys. He can't make that decision. And I think it's without question, I'm in agreement with everyone's observations that they get these services, and they're benefiting from these matching funds, but like in looking at big picture-wise here, and like Mr. Sne said, going forward, maybe that's the bigger picture you need to look at in the future going forward. Are we going to now, we're going to penalize people, or ask people to answer questions that are in no position to answer them just because those guys won't do what they should be doing? I think everybody's in agreement. Those other counties should be stepping up and kicking in their fair share, so.
Okay.
So I could change my, modify my amendment.
Go ahead.
That the meeting by Mr. Pedri and Mr. Haas with the individuals from the other counties will, in fact, determine the future of Hazleton Transit Authority following this year, so that it doesn't happen again.
Right.
Okay, so if we fully fund this year because it was in the budget, but that going forward, we will have a definite decision that if they want to contribute, fine, but don't ask us to contribute their portions.
So is that a allowable amendment to this motion?
She's removing her original, it seems like you're removing your original amendment...
To postpone.
To postpone, so you're with...
Yes, I'm definitely going to do that.
Ms. Wakus, she was drawing a second.
Yes.
Can I still speak to that amendment, if it's still on the table?
Which one?
Sheila's original amendment?
It's off the table now.
It just flew off the table. Okay.
It's off the table.
Okay. Can I speak to that? The new one?
Ms. Sedman, I think the, it's actually a motion, I believe she made. It's not an amendment.
It's an emotion. It's a motion.
It's a separate item.
It's a, yes.
Correct.
It's a new motion.
Yep.
But I think that everybody understands that this issue will not be repeated because we are going to take action as soon as possible that they understand the ramifications of their non-contribution.
If I could, Mr. Chair, the conversation we just had, I really wish we would have had that conversation. Originally, Mr. Urban brought this up about the eighteen thousand dollar discrepancy at that time, because we could have. And I, well, I appreciate Mr. Sharp stepping in saying, being willing to go and meet with the commissioners. If that was not the right approach, we should have discussed that at that point, many months ago. It's now coming first circle. I acknowledge, too, we budgeted the money. That's great. I think we all have personal household budgets, too. Just because you have money in the budget for entertainment over the weekend, doesn't mean you have to spend that money. And I think, again, we are entrusted with the taxpayers' money. We want to watch every dime. And when you look at about a hundred and eighty thousand dimes that we're talking about here. So, again, if we're not, if we don't have the linchpin that is, hey, we might face a shortage or some kind of curtailment of service, then nothing's going to get done. It's going to be a nice sit around, let's talk about stuff, and I don't see that really yielding any fruit. Right now, again, time is of the essence. I think if we do this now, we might see some immediate results.
Okay.
Again, not to cut our noses by their face, but I think you might see some.
Do we have any other amendments? If not, we're going to vote on the motion.
So if that's your, if that's your feeling, Harry, are you making a new amendment? That, because I withdrew mine?
No, I don't think you made an amendment. You made a comment.
I would like to make Sheila's original amendment.
But it was...
That was voted down.
Well, we voted that down.
The original amendment that you made, voted down.
He just said to postpone. He would like to...
Well, if he wants to make that amendment, say it.
Make a motion.
Motion.
Okay. Make a motion to postpone, two more weeks, so that it might die out.
Okay, motion postponed. Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban, anybody else on the motion?
And again, just to tie this up, too, again, we've been funding Hazel and Public Transit for twenty years. County's been funding a hundred percent, even though it's under jurisdiction of the city. Doesn't add up, okay? It's come to light, so now let's act on it.
Came to light six years ago.
And now it's even...
Nothing was done about it, Harry.
Six years ago, it's been...
So we got to do it now.
And nobody said anything about it.
I'd call for a vote.
No.
All right.
I'll call for a vote.
I think we've had enough comments and discussion. Roll call, please, on the motion to postpone. Mr. Haas's motion postponed, second by Mr. Urban.
Mr. Sne?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
And motion fails. Now we go back to the original motions on the agenda, motion adopt, a motion to adopt a resolution committing a local match for state operating assistance for Hazel Public Transit. Mr. Sne made that motion. Mr. Bilbo made the second.
Compliment question.
Question? Call for the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No, because of discrepancy in funding.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to number seven, a motion to adopt the resolution awarding in 2018, 2019 Luzern County Recreation and Conservation Fund grant money, which would be Act 13 money, correct? We had, the committee came back with recommendations, was discussed at the work session two weeks ago. Do we want to vote on the recommendation total, or do we want to vote one at a time?
I'll make a motion, have a vote on it as a package.
As, okay. Mr. Sne makes a motion that we do in total. Mr. Vog, second. On the question?
I think not to speak for the community's chair, but there was near unanimity on the whole thing, so I think it's a good motion Mr. Sne made.
Very good.
Good members would agree with that.
Anyone else? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
And motion fails. Now we go back to the original motions on the agenda, motion adopt,
So we are actually voting on these awards. We're not voting on whether we're going to vote on them all at once or singly. Which, which is the vote?
Mr. Snee made a vote to vote them all together as one.
That's what I, so are we voting on his motion to vote on them all together, or are we voting on the...
No, we're voting on the total package.
Okay. Well, yes.
Okay.
I'd just like to know what I'm voting on.
Yeah, the ones that are listed.
Okay. So Ms. Houck, your yes?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. And we added one item, the support letter, that was found on the work session. Information is there, but we've scheduled it for, to move it up to the vote because of the fact that there's a time situation in order to submit it, so that it's there for the Attorney General. So do we have a motion to send the letter of support?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
So Mr. Bilbo, or Mr. Urban, and Ms. Sedman, on the question? Is everybody satisfied with the letter? Yes.
I would like to see it say something more than, and it's signed by the Chair, but I, I do think it should mention all of her names.
I have no problem with that. I thought we would add at the bottom all the people who voted.
Sure.
So that everyone would be part of that.
Yeah, I'd like them to see that it wasn't just sent by, maybe a simple majority, but...
And we'll attach the resolution also, so they'll, they'll have that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, yeah, thanks, Ms. Sedman. I agree with that, and that's why Ms. Lawrence put it on the, on the county letterhead, so our names are up there.
Yes.
And I, again, I'm envisioning if we could all sign in pen, sign a, a hard copy to send it down, to have in the hand.
We could have the hard copy ready tomorrow.
I think it would be...
But I think we have to have it out of here by probably Friday.
Yeah.
In order to meet the guidelines, so we don't have anything to hold up.
But if this passes, essentially, if Ms. Lawrence could just make a copy in the break, perhaps, I don't know if that would be too much to ask.
Possibly.
Okay, she can't, if it's too much trouble, but if it is...
Well, it's tough for some people timeframe to get here.
Yeah.
So that would, if we could do that, maybe even by the end of the meeting or something, we can have, have it ready.
Something like that.
And that would be fine.
Okay. And thanks for the flexibility, Mr. Chairman. If anybody has any edits or anything like that you see there, I'm totally open to that. I mean, the issue is, we just want to show our unified support and hope people come in and help our task force.
Any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Griffin, I'd like to publicly thank you on behalf of council and every citizens of Luzerne County. I mean, more or less, you're just a one-man band that got a lot of people interested in your message. And I mean, he's just doing all this on his own, on his own time. There's not too many people that step up to the plate like you, Mr. Griffin. I just want to thank you on behalf of everybody in Luzerne County, for your tremendous passion and effort in this cause.
Very good. Anyone else? So the motion would be to, the support letter with all the council members' names as part of that. Everyone, all right with that?
Sign in pen below.
Mr. Urban, you okay with that? Ms. Sedman, second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we're at the end of the agendas for the voting session. So public comment on any item anyone would like to bring to the council? Mr. Griffin?
Hello, council, Mr. Chairman, and citizens. I just want to thank you for thanking me. It's not necessary. Our opioid survivors group is comprised of parents who've lost their children already, unfortunately. And last Thursday, we met with Attorney General Freed from the Middle District of Pennsylvania, and he's the U.S. Attorney General. And Pam Dougherty, one mother, she was there, and she showed Attorney General Freed pictures of her daughter, Michaeline. And Pam Elliott also showed Attorney General pictures of her son, Thomas. And Attorney General Freed was quite moved. And I, I showed him the material on the, the ten task forces that were sent across the country, but barely nothing in Pennsylvania. And he said, "Well, I'd like to have one in Hazleton." And I said, "So..." We didn't have to sell it. And we told him that we speak before Hazleton Council, Wilkes-Barre Council, and County Council. He said, "Look, I'm going to meet my Superior Attorney General Barr in Washington on the twenty-fourth. Could you get me a letter or some..." And so, some letters, I said, "Yes, we'll try." So that's what the letter of support, basically, it asked for more help and/or task force. And Josh Shapiro gave us funding for one county task force officer, which was great, but, and Steph Salvantis, our district attorney, she's been in this room a lot, saying she needs more boots on the ground. So what this task force would do, well, Attorney General Freed said, "If I can't get you the task force, I'm going to get you more dedicated officers, federal officers for Luzerne County." Because he said, "I have kids, too." So that's, it was a successful meeting with the parents. So it's, we're going to just keep on, but I want to thank all of council, you guys. Government sometimes is slow and cumbersome, like tonight with the, the Hazleton Transportation, but it's important. But you've really acted speedily with the opioid epidemic, and the parents on the committee realize that, so. But it's, real quick, it's three-sided. It's not just arresting the top drug dealers that the DEA would do if they came in here to help us. And they're already here now, but they send an agent and they leave. They send an FBI agent and they leave. A task force would be here permanently, like they are in ten other places in the country. But it's, the opioid epidemic, the numbers are terrible here. We're seventh in the state for deaths. But it's three-sided. It's continued education of the youth and expanded education of the youth. It's propping up law enforcement with the feds and our county task force. And it's also improved treatment programs of longer duration, which the, the people are getting released, and they're still addicted, and they're dying because the drug dealers are still there. And we're not talking about the street dealers who are addicted themselves. We're talking about the big guys. So we got a lot of work to do, and Matt, Matt Vogt and everybody, you've been working, we're going, we want to, we want to move on from the law enforcement with our committee to, to work extensively with the youth and the treatment. So I think your letter's going to be very, very helpful when he can hand his boss Hazleton's letter, Wilkes-Barre City's letter, and County Council's letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Mr. Troy?
I'd like to make a comment and request. Agenda items, I could still comment on those, I assume. I may even know they had to vote.
Correct. Any issue?
I'm a little disappointed in a couple of, first of all, I'm disappointed on the vote, Mr. Haas's amendment. I wanted to commend Mr. Haas and Mr. Urban for speaking up for the taxpayers as they pretty consistently do, to realize that it's not the county's responsibility to bail out Hazleton Public Transit, it's an authority, I didn't quite catch that, year after year. There's a terrific, terrible fiscal crisis, I'm sure you're all aware of this, in the county, as there are, as there is, and other levels of government. And I think some of you still don't realize that. As far as, I, I'd like to just make a request for next time, if whoever prints up the agenda could be a little more specific regarding, for instance, there's no, I mean, I don't have, I'm not, don't have access to the computer all the time, and maybe this is spelled out on the website, but specifics as to how much money was approved here for Hazleton Public Transit should be posted on the agenda writ. And also, the written agenda, I mean, and also the County Recreation and Conservation Fund grant money that was just awarded, does that come directly, that doesn't come directly out of the county's budget, or does it?
As Act thirteen funding, which comes from the fracking?
And I just have, in the time remaining, a, a couple of comments on what's under discussion here in the work session regarding the Mavri Strategies proposition by Mr. Pedri. Do I have another minute or two?
You have a minute.
That's another thing I like to protest, Mr. McGinley, there's not enough time for people to comment on this stuff.
Mr. Troy, that's...